I'd call the February 20th, 2019 meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Weisman?
Here.
Mr. Sims?
Here.
Mrs. Cárdenas? Mr. Erdel?
Here.
Mrs. Keirren? Mrs. Wise?
Is there a motion to excuse Mrs. Cárdenas, Mrs. Weisman, and Mrs. Keirren?
So, second.
Is there any discussion? Is it done, Mrs. Thomas? Will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
If all those who are in, please rise for the bledge of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Some move.
Second. Is there any discussion about the minutes from the last meeting? Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Should we do the table or just hang it on?
Finally, I'm going to table possibly take that out of the board. What a move to begin with.
Yes, I will go and make another motion to table minutes and then take them out of the board once they're probably constitutional.
Very good. I'll draw my second and second. Very good. New motion by Mr. Weisman, be second by Mr. Rock. There's no discussion. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel? Aye.
Motion carries. It's enabled until later in the meeting. Next up is comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes, total of 15 minutes per meeting unless otherwise permitted by council. I know that Mrs. Goodman is here to address us on the Kiawah River Reclamation. I'm already killing the nail. How about here at the podium? I think she can microphone and they'll help us with recording.
Hi, producer. I'm going to, I'm going to make you work. I'm going to need to take the model to the back desk. So, hi, my name is Jane Goodman and by day, by night, you know me as councilman across the street in South Yewood, but by day, I am Executive Director of Kiawah River Restoration.
Restoration? Excuse me. Thank you. I misstated it. That's what it was.
We changed our name pretty quickly. Klauga River. And as such, we staff the Kiawah River Area of Concern, which is, used to be called the RAP, the Medial Action Plan. Then USDA decided we had to change the name of that committee. So, it does not only include, as you know, the river and that watershed drains to the Kiawah, but we get 10 miles of Lake Erie shoreline as well, which includes Dome Brook, Dougway Brook, Nine Mile Creek, Yewood Creek. So, those all have to meet certain requirements, certain levels of help, which are in my little brochure as a list of, actually, there are both pieces that I handed to you. As part of the area of concern, we are working in your watersheds as well to meet these requirements. We have taken three off the list so far, so I'm here to give you an update on how well you're doing, and you may not even have realized it. So, starting with a list of 10, we have knocked three of those impairments off the list. Now, the watershed, the area of concern is, does not have a problem with aesthetics, does not have a problem with public access, mostly because there are so many new users, and largely that's on the river, but also the new things that have gone on on the lakeshore have contributed to that. And most recently, we haven't made the public announcement, so you're among the first to hear that now the fish that are caught along the lakefront and especially in the Kiawah River are safe to eat. Still, for a couple of them, bramblehead catfish mostly, have to restrict it to no more than, like, one meal every couple of weeks. But that's a huge change from the way it was 50 years ago, and as you know, we're celebrating the 50th anniversary of the fire on the Kiawah River, which happened the year I graduated from high school. I know, it's eerie. So, I just came to let you know that progress is being made, and also that you are now part of what on that map is a pink area, pink wedge at the very top, just to the left of the Yewood Creek watershed. Now, in terms of this program, Dome Brook, also the Dome Brook watershed, its hydrologic unit, also includes Dougway Brook, so Dome Brook, Dougway Brook, and Nine Mile Creek, and Green Creek. But you are the headwaters of Dougway Brook and Nine Mile Creek. You see Nine Mile Creek in front of the Walmart on Warrensville, our green shopping center? Yeah, and I hope you've visited. That's Nine Mile Creek that goes through there and it pops up again on Bellmar. Dougway Brook shows its face, peeks out a little behind the Mayflower Apartments, and otherwise makes its way, and I just came from Brattonall, who would like me to express to you, thank you for keeping your end of what winds up in their backyards as clean as possible. Any questions? And we are also part of the Safety Task Force if you ever talk to your brother Paul. We work together on that. Questions? So, congratulations. You're doing a good job. I will try and keep you updated, because things are moving very quickly now. Thanks. It's very kind.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. You're still in the public forum section of the meeting. Is there anyone else who care to address the city? Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Hi, Mayor, the coast people. My name's Paul Mickerson. I've been a University Heights resident since 1976. I lived on the south of Bellmar Boulevard, all that time as a matter of fact. I'm here to invite, here to have city council, give city council a brief overview of Meals on Wheels, which I've had the distinct privilege of being involved with for about eight years now. You may or may not know, but Meals on Wheels was established here in 1982. It's a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization, and encompasses the communities of Beachwood, Shaker Heights, and University Heights. It's an independent organization. It's not directly affiliated with the National Meals on Wheels America Organization. We stand alone, if you will. Its purpose, as you might guess, is to provide nutritional food to those in the community who are disabled, homebound, or otherwise unable to shop for food or cook their own meals. Our operational money comes from individual donors, sponsorships, and fundraisers, as well as the clients themselves. You should know that there is no federal subsidy involved here. So, the clients actually are billed $7 for a hot meal, a meal package. It includes a hot meal, but it also includes a second meal, a cold meal with sandwiches. The goal of Meals on Wheels is actually to maintain a sufficient number of volunteers so that we can prepare the food and to deliver the food to the clients in these three communities. Increasing the funding, of course, is very important, so we'd like to expand the number of our clients if at all possible, and ultimately be able to provide meals at reduced costs to the clients. Lastly, to develop a board, who have members with fresh ideas and who continue to be excited about accomplishing these goals. So, we're always looking for new citizens to join the board, so it'd be wonderful if a member, for example, of the council would even consider such a position. Even here tonight, people sitting in the audience, obviously, they have a commitment to the good of our community, and so I would invite them to also make serious consideration about joining them one way or another. I have left some newsletters at the desk back there. This is the most recent newsletter. It might give you a little better feeling of the organization. Council members have also received that. They actually, four of you received a bonus. You actually got a second newsletter tucked in too. That was a couple that I found from last spring that actually are very good. It outlines, gives a bio of one of the board members, and also our executive director has a nice article in that as well. So, if you don't have it, you can ask your sidekick to hand it over to you. So, that being said, that's all I really have to say. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them or wait until after the meeting.
Are there any questions for Mr. Mickerson?
Until the recent past, until about, I'm going to say six months ago or so, we delivered Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Because of the commitment of the volunteers, we compressed that. So, we're only delivering Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. However, on Monday, we're also delivering Tuesdays meals, and on Wednesday, we're delivering Thursdays, et cetera. So, there's no decrease in the amount of food, it's just that we're delivering it only three times a week.
Thank you, Mr. Mickerson. Is there anyone else here who would care to address the city?
My name is still Sherry, and I still live on Washington Boulevard, and my neighborhood is still in bad shape. Okay. Patrick and James know about some of this, but I wanted all of you people to know about this. The way the city notifies these absentee landlords of violations is not working, so something new needs to be developed. Since the beginning of September, and Mr. McReynolds can clarify this, there has been trash all over my neighborhood. I have lived in this city for decades, and we never, ever had this problem. Okay? The house at 4013 is a two-family, and for a very long time, they had their trash in the wrong place. I think, Mr. McReynolds, it is finally behind the house, it was on the side for six months. However, they have maybe four containers, they need about 10, because they have bags of trash. Couple of weeks ago, I happened to be waiting for somebody to come over, somebody comes out the front door carrying at least six bags of trash, took it to the backyard. Now, that's Sunday. Our trash doesn't get picked up till Tuesday. And I'm under the impression that if you have a container with a lid, it can be outside, bags not. Animals can get into them. So, these kids are going to be leaving in May, new ones are going to be coming in August, and the same thing is going to happen over again. This owner needs to be notified that his unruly tenants are not complying, and the mayor told me a long time ago that the magical year was 1966, we stopped putting our trash on the lawn, and I wish some of you, any of you, would drive around the city on Monday and Tuesday at 8:00, because that's when I'm going to get my newspaper, the bank, the post office, or the gas station, and you should see all the trash on the tree lawn in containers that are not covered and bags that are just sitting there. Okay? I also have what I call a horrible owner next door to me, the apartment on the corner of Washington and Warrensville. Okay? He does absolutely the bare minimum if he's forced to. Okay? He had, years ago, the city told him they were considered commercial, their trash would no longer be picked up, they had somebody do it, everything went along fine for years and years. Then all of a sudden, he decides to get one of those where the truck picks it up. They were coming between quarter to 6:00 and 6:15 every Monday, making lots and lots of noise. For whatever reason, he got Kimball, and Chief Rogers was kind enough to call, and they actually thanked him, because he expressed to them they shouldn't be coming at 6:00 in the morning. Anyways, so now, and Patrick knows this, and James knows this, the receptacle is no longer in the enclosure behind the garage. It is right at the end of the drive, in the back. So, if you walk by or drive by, you can see it. That's number one. It should be in an enclosure, because it's considered a commercial area. Number two, and I'm just going out on a limb here, the owner is a cheapskate, so instead of getting a dumpster that's maybe as long as this row that used to be in the enclosure, it's now half the size. James drove by and saw. It is overflowing, and my guess is he doesn't want to pay for the bigger unit, and somebody needs to sit down with him. He is a horrible, horrible neighbor. And in the coming weeks, I'll let you know the rest. Tonight is being specifically on trash. I also contacted James. There's a house on the corner of Meadow Brook and Warrensville. Faces Meadow Brook, southeast corner, the driveway faces Warrensville. They have containers overflowing, no lids, bags on the ground, and this was Saturday. And because of the holiday, the soonest it could have been picked up was Tuesday, but I don't know what day their trash is. A friend of mine happened to come down Warrensville and said, "Oh, my gosh, that looks disgusting." I said, "I already saw it." And the last one I want to report on is between Meadow Brook and Hill Brook on the east side, and I'm going to be going backwards only because it's hard to see the addresses. Coming from Meadow Brook, there is one house, then a second house. The third and fourth, which would obviously be closer to Hill Brook, had at least 20 bags of trash yesterday on the tree lawn. Now, I would think 20 bags would call for a commercial pickup, so somebody needs to call these owners and tell them, "We are not in the trash business." 20, at least, there could have been more, and it is really disgusting. And I'm assuming that all you people up here live in different parts of the city, and you don't have this problem, but like I said, drive on my street, south Bellmar, Bushnell from Miramar to Warrensville, Dumpie, the whole block is a dump, and on Warrensville. And like I said, these people either need to be called by somebody, sent a registered letter, and sent to call the city hall, and get this cleaned up, because they are ruining our suburb, and it looks like the slums. And everything that's been accomplished in the last year has been great, but none of it is going to matter. When you drive around and see trash everywhere, cars everywhere, you might as well be living in the worst part of Cleveland Heights or East Cleveland. And I always loved living here. It was a great suburb. Everything was beautiful, and it is just so, so discouraging to see how far it has fallen. And like I said, I've been coming since last year. Chief Rogers was kind enough to get signs on my street, and Patrick knows about the dumpster next door, and so does James, but I wanted the mayor and all of you people to know, this city has a real problem with trash, and if we don't do something about it, it is only, only, it is only going to get worse. And it's very frustrating, it's very upsetting, it's stressful, and it's very sad, because I remember when my dad bought a lot in University Heights for the house that I live in, he told all his family and friends, "University Heights is the best place to live, because they have strict ordinances." So, I don't know if we have ordinances and we're not enforcing them, or we don't have them, but if we don't, then we need to get some, because it's pretty bad, and it's very upsetting to me. And as Mr. McReynolds says, "You take great pride in your suburb." I said, "Yes, I do." And I've lived here, there's probably not many people that have lived here longer than me, so I know what this city can look like and what it should look like. How long? Way before you, Mayor. Like I said, I don't think there's many residents that have lived here as long as me, so I know what this suburb could look like and should look like, and I wish people would take interest as it was on the market.
What year were you here since?
Me?
Yeah.
56.
56.
I've been here 62 years, and this used to be a beautiful suburb and a wonderful place to live.
You've been here since 40.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening? All right. Saying done, moving along. Reports and communications from the mayor and taking action. I'm going to keep this very, very brief. We have a finance committee and finance advisory committee meeting tomorrow, the 21st, at 7:00 p.m. Bill, I told you the wrong place. It's actually going to be here in this room tomorrow night, so that is where that meeting is with regard to working towards a proposed 2019 budget. One week ago from this evening, I addressed the city in the Jardine Room with the State of the City address. I spoke at length there and don't have to reiterate any of that this evening, I think. What I would do, however, is just for the sake of the record, incorporate those comments as if they were fully received herein, and ask Mrs. Thomas to record them as part of the official record as an attachment to the city, so it passes down to whoever. Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. I also sent electronic version of this just before the meeting, but that's the one I sent. And with that, that concludes my report. So, next is agenda items. Item A is the appointment of Harvey Alshabes to the city's Board of Zoning Appeals Commission for a term period of two years, and Mr. Shabes is here with us this evening. I'm delighted that he is willing to serve in this capacity as part of the recent reorganization of the BZA. Appointments to the BZA are made by the mayor and informed by council. In the council back this evening is Mr. Shabes's resume. He brings another educated, but different perspective to our BZA, that of an engineer, and I am confident that he's going to bring a perspective that we can use on the BZA, and at the same time, complement many learning perspectives we do have on the BZA often. So, Mr. Shabes, you can stand up, just so everybody can see you, and if anybody has any questions for Mr. Shabes over here, they may ask. Mr. Shabes, I don't know if you have to say, I don't think you'll put it on the spot, but you'll have to.
I've been a resident here over, like, a nice young lady, but we've been here over 30 years now. Proud of our city, our city, the city of Roe, who answered anything I could do to serve it and help it to be successful.
We're delighted to have you, and I appreciate your willingness to serve. I will not, well, I guess I'm going to make any jokes about it doesn't take rocket scientists to do X.
The darn house takes a rocket scientist to take out the garbage.
But it sure doesn't hurt to have one. I'm sure you hear this all the time.
Indeed, I do, yes. Secret, I actually do work for NASA on a couple of studies in years, but that's not my part. It's my opportunity, if I went to school, but the point is, I'm a citizen of the Earth and I'd be happy to serve in that.
Is there a motion?
That Harvey Alshabes to the city's Board of Zoning Appeals Commission for a term period of two years, beginning March 1st.
Yes, we can admit that to a period of two years ending January 31st, 2020. Second. We have motion by Mr. Sam, and a second by Mr. Weisman. Is there any discussion? Mr. Weisman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am pleasantly surprised that Harvey Shabes got the appointment for the BZA. I've known Harvey for quite a long time. I'm a longtime resident of the city as well, and I find him to be somebody who not only is extremely intelligent, but someone with a lot of integrity, has helped out lots of the city. It's nice to have someone who cares as much as he does about the city and about how it runs. I'm happy that he's actually willing to serve, and we're going to be able to use his talents, so that's great. I think the BZA is also, excuse me, taken on a sort of a heightened level of importance. People may not know, but we recently moved, released a change to the BZA so that they are the Board of Last Resort, if somebody wants to alter, I think, the zoning or the things surrounding their houses. If he was not to come to council, he goes to court, so we can go to him personally.
Thank you. Your whole heart. Thank you. Anything further? If there is nothing further, then Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll of the motion?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Mr. Shabes, will you join the podium so I can swear you out? Okay. You will raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Harvey Alshabes.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
The state of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of University Heights.
The city of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the city of University Heights.
The city of University Heights.
Board of Zoning Appeals.
Board of Zoning Appeals.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. You were welcome to say your name. You are welcome to call the motions.
I don't use as long as it works to say.
Run for the door, especially as they get up. The next item is item B, ordinance 2019-05, authorizing the creation of a storefront improvement program to be administered by the city's economic development department. This is on the second meeting. Susan Drucker is at the podium. Mrs. Drucker, do you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Just to give you some highlights.
Just to give you some highlights without reiterating everything that I presented at the last council meeting, the storefront improvement program, the main goal for this program is to serve as an incentive program to property owners in the city's commercial districts to improve their properties. When I talk about improving properties, we're looking to make a transformational improvement if the city was to give money to anyone to incentivize them to take advantage of this program. And this transformational improvement would be to the exterior part of the buildings of anyone that would be eligible for, depending on if it's an eligible commercial building, since not all commercial buildings could be eligible according to this program. When I use the term transformational, I mean that the facade of the alterations that we will make, that will be made on the building, will make the building look different than what it was before the renovations took place. I did have the opportunity to talk with Councilman Sims to overreview his email. One thing I did want to bring to attention of the council that was not clear was in Exhibit B. If you look under step one and number three, this is the application process and this is to say, is your project eligible? It's read, really, if you take out all the parentheses, "Commercial buildings including but not necessarily limited to retail professional services, certain repair services, and business services are eligible for the improvement program." I didn't want it to be, in the parentheses, I was simply given examples of what types of professional services. So when I say a repair service for office equipment, the grant is not for those particular services or to make repairs. It's always, it's only for the exterior of a commercial building that may house these types of businesses in individual retail shops. The other issue that was brought up just through our discussions at the last council meeting was that someone raised the issue about possibly setting deadlines for applications or not. That is common in these programs. However, when we're starting off, remember the first year we want to treat this as a pilot program. And the reason I don't want to put deadlines on the application is because I don't want to discourage anybody with this being a new program. It's going to take time to get the word out, to advertise that we have this program. So I don't want someone thinking, "Oh, I didn't, I'm not going to be ready by May." So we lose a whole year. The idea is for, once this program hopefully is approved, then we can get the ball rolling with the program as soon as possible. And as far as the, just to review the process, the applicant would meet with me originally to review their plans or their ideas. This is before really any money is spent. And then we'll discuss ways that they can improve their building to make them fulfill the requirements of our program so that they could possibly receive reimbursement funds. So before any major dollars are being spent, the applicant would have a good idea as if their project would be approved or not. So we're not going to, so that's why it's important for them to meet with me initially because I don't want anything forwarded to council unless it's a program that I would be behind, the mayor would be behind, and that I would have a very, pretty good idea what council would be behind, without having any premature voting. But by the time it got to council for approval, it would be something that I would hope council would think would be a slam dunk project. And then once the person applies, then remember they always need final approval from city councils. Council, you will always have the final say of the project and what would be, what funds would be reimbursed. Also brought up was the discussion of possibly having a scoring system or do we not have a scoring system? So I kind of wanted to just lay that out, the two options. So for example, if we have option one, let's just call it, without a scoring system, we could have a committee when the city is in receipt of an application. And when I use the term committee, the committee could be council, it could be residents who volunteer, or it could be a group of city employees. And then they would, we would review the storefront improvement. If you look at Exhibit B, Part Three, there's a list of storefront improvement costs and those list individual improvement types. And so this would identify the improvements that are scheduled to be made. It includes what the contractor's estimates are. And then that way it gives us an idea of what's the investment going to be made on the part of the property. Because they have to make a great investment for us to be able to offer some type of reimbursement. The committee could review the application based on the actual improvements. And by that time, we would have actual drawings and more pictures of what the before and after pictures would look like of the building, the contractor's estimates and cost of the project, as I mentioned. And then we ask the questions, is the project transformation? Does the project add value to the commercial district? Does the project comply with the city's master plan? And does this project remove light from our community? So, and then the committee could write us on, based on those, as to why somebody would be approved or if a project isn't approved or if there's some change that would be recommended to help the application further along. Option two, I'd use the same list with the storefront improvement costs. And the only difference would be for each improvement type, we could put a scoring system from zero to five. So just for, just for an example. And the applicant is scored based on every element that is on that list. So if you look at that, that would be... So we would list all of them zero to five. So if they did break point, then you score what type of break point improvement it would be. And again, it's just, it would still take a committee to do the scoring. Or if they didn't do any exterior painting, then they automatically get a zero. And then you could tally up the points and then you have a range. We can provide a range which would then indicate how much the applicant could receive. So if the applicant scored sixty-five points, then they're eligible for the full $25,000. So that's, those are the types of options you have. As far as the budgeting for this program, there's been different amounts that have been offered. I'm only asking for $25,000 because the thing I want council to realize is I really don't know this first year how flush we'll be with applications. I would love for that to be a problem and that would be a good problem to have. But then I could come back to council and ask for additional appropriations. But to start the program off, I would want to tie up dollars in the budget that we're not sure if they would be used. I also did the, I went around and took pictures throughout the city of possible projects, just to give me an idea of what, how many projects do we really have out there? And I would say we have between seven and twelve. And the reason they're not, I can't give you the set number. Seven for sure, if these buildings applied and did a complete renovation, I would, that could be very positive. Other ones, it's because the buildings, they might want to make some improvement. But the building looks pretty nice right now. So that's why there's some that'll, how much more can we do to a building that already looks good? So that was just to give you an idea of how many projects potentially we could be making that when we're discussing the project funding. So if you have questions? Aye.
Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Is there any other questions for Mrs. Drucker? Mr. Wise?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Drucker, look at the bullet point sheet, Exhibit A, that you had. Part of the package. The eight or nine bullet point says, "A building is occupied by, owned by national franchises." Franchises, these are not eligible. Does that include a building that might be rented by a franchisee? I can't think of a specific franchise right now, but one, it may be dozen of them. My guess is that what we're doing is to split this away from a, just toward local businesses and away from businesses that have national support.
Right, that's a good one.
So I just want to make sure nothing falls through the cracks because there's a franchisee that just rents the building they're in. If only, maybe we want to exempt them as well.
Look, can I discuss this too? And I actually turned the mood from the podium of this, just because I want to be careful.
Don't have to answer it now. Because, so that's, the conversation that we had was wanting to make sure that the program guidelines will keep the money confined to local businesses, smaller businesses as opposed to large national franchises. That's the intent of the bullet point. I think from a legal analysis standpoint, it's fine to exclude them because they might have protection rights. But this is one, you know, falling into a class that we don't have. Whether we would want to fine tune the language to say, locally owned building then to a national franchisee who qualifies, we're certainly considered. My point was to exclude them. Oh. Disqualified. Yeah, that's what I think this does. Okay. So what says improvements, the building is occupied by, or, um, yeah. I'll try to read the whole sentence next time you throw it at me. Thank you. I like it just the way it is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Roth.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked quite a few questions in the last meeting, so I don't have any additional questions to comment. And thank you for your further explanation. Clarify some of the things today based off of the question. I can tell you just from my personal experience, my experience through my career, that improvements are contagious, that when someone makes an improvement or going, when we got our new kitchen, like three of my neighbors did it like the next year. And when you paint your front door, I saw like five neighbors do it the following year. So it's something that I see as contagious in the architectural area, know as business owners make these improvements. Because they're competing against other business owners down the street, it's first different development opportunities. So this is a living program, I'm very excited.
Thank you. I'd love that to happen, frankly, please. That's what I'm really hoping for, that one project that takes advantage of this and then we use that as an example.
All right. Have I said anything further? Yes, Mr. White?
Yes. I just wanted to say that with this exciting program, it sounds better because you bring it up, tighten it up more and more. And I like the scoring system. Basically, Marshall is a good factor. Yeah, I think it's great. We're living, we're doing this on line.
Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Is there anything further, Mrs. Drucker?
I would hope that there's an approval. I don't think we can, um...
No, so too, Mr. Sims.
Well, I would just say that I also agree with some of breaking the concept for a program. And could be backing, you know, some of your earlier remarks about, you know, the state of the city, our infrastructure, our policy. And this speaks to our commercial buildings. It's a heated program. I know if you're not interested in income rate, more resources than you know you can spend, but if I just look at the back of the envelope, calculation, if there's seven properties, the potential of this program is $175,000. If there's twelve, it's $300,000 and so forth. An investment between $175,000 and $300,000. And the transformational visual impact that it could have on the city, which will raise the perception on the city to the community and those that pass through. I think that it's worth every penny. And I would just add that you put forth a number of options relative to how the program might be administered. I believe that it would be best to handle most of it administratively. I think that you could put in procedures that would allow the city to manage the program. And my hope is that economic development and community development will become part of a oversight by a specific council committee. And so if there is a committee, it would be very convenient for that council to look at whatever deals that might come up and then make a recommendation to council, which council hopefully could be confident in because it had been reviewed by our colleagues and, you know, have support going in. So, you know, I just think that it's a great effort. I think it's worth every penny. I think that we should make it as easy as possible for anyone that's interested in the program. In our conversation, I mentioned that because of the spoke of our program, I don't know that we should have like a competitive thing where you got to put it in by a certain date. I think we should give the business owners or property owners as much flexibility as possible. So if in July, I learned that I have the resources or I have a way of improving my building, then I can move forward in July and I don't have to wait till January of the next year to think about what support I might be able to get from the local community. So I just, you know, I say keep it open and flexible. We're not talking about a tremendous amount of money for a large number of projects. I think we should just do it as hard as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Is anybody have any further comment? Or, Mrs. Drucker, did you want to comment on what's ready to finish?
Oh, no, we were just, no, he was pretty much, pretty quiet already.
Very good. Mr. McReynolds, I have one, one comment that is only meant to improve the program, which is that the program is popular, so we want to continue. This could be the kind of thing that council could refer to CIC research. CIC, that involves a lot of projects. Could just come up.
It works this year, and then I'll send you actually back to the city. So with that, Mayor, I would move that ordinance 2019-05 authorizing the creation of a storefront improvement program to be administered by the city's economic development department.
They're motioning lies, you seems to approve the resolution as their second. A second by Mr. Roth, is there any further discussion? Mr. Wise?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is why Indian economic development, I think this is fantastic. There are so few things that we can do meaningfully for local businesses that's working there in University Heights. We can pick up their trash, but helping them approve the curfew, I think is something that's huge. It's going to make them want to put more money into their own business. It's going to make them want to stay. It's going to make them want to sell more stuff that fast and fast. Another business want to come in, I don't think you can overstate the effect that this kind of program has. And I'm just really happy to have Mrs. Drucker and then happy to have a chance to.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wise. Is there anything further? Mrs. Thomas, make all the more motion.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your support, I appreciate it. Actually, we'll wait up here for the next one.
Yes, really? That sounds like a good idea. Actually, the CIC is a resolution 2019-06 to vary. The structure located on the property at 2109 Taylor Road, front person number seventeen, two, dash, one, dash, one, four, to be a public residence. Mrs. Drucker, Mr. Roth, and Myers, here.
Good evening, Council. So this property, 2109 South Taylor Road, is the former action passage control company on Taylor Road, just north of the scene. So the city recently acquired the property on January 14th. And as you can see from the photos, unfortunately, the building is in a state of disrepair. Just from the outside, it's disintegrating and falling apart and actually falling away from the building. Around the side, we've overrun, collecting trash around the exterior of the building. And then as you proceed inside, unfortunately, one of the first things we encountered two days after we took possession of the property was a burst apartment inside the structure. And it blew out a whole wall that was gushing water over the weekend. So we took possession, I believe it was on Friday, coming over the weekend. The pipe burst. It was through the cold spells that we had had. Unfortunately, the building hadn't been under pressure recently, so there wasn't a lot of maintenance occurring. And we also discovered as part of the current property, and then unfortunately has the, the... ice and snow began to melt, is that there are a significant number of holes in the roof and the ceiling. Beautiful water feature coming up from the water pipes are gonna come down from the ceiling. So the property, thankfully, we got the water shut off, but it was not after significant tries from the service department to shut it off inside, only to discover that there isn't a water main inside the building. So we had to make a closing water to come out and turn out from the street. And being a former pest control company, the property has been quite significantly used, and there is a residual smell associated with the property as well. So unfortunately, this property, it was a doctor's office previous to the pest control company. Unfortunately, this property is by days old, and it has gotten to a point that it's also making a wrestle with this disrepair. It sits next to a paint hardware holster here in this thing, and it actually shows fire wall. It's not made from his business, or any of those who are on the Taylor Road. So that's why we're here before you tonight as a team working to acquire the property and then decide it's a bait and for you to make this request to declare a public nuisance.
Thank you, Mr. Robin Myers. Are there questions or comments with respect to the presentation and materials of the act? Mr. Earl?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that you would think such a small building wouldn't be any kind of problem at all to acquire. It sounds like it was a great idea. But, uh, the smaller, the better, I guess. That's, uh, that's great. It's exciting that we're adding the portfolio of that area on certain progress. And that really does, I mean, it's nice to make acquisitions, but it's also, as you said, it's really denigrating the people in that area.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock.
There were title issues as well, just to, just to give a tip of the cap. The owner of the property, owner of the business, actually owned the property through a trust, a trust that formed decades ago, many days ago, trust stock, it's been working with systems. And so our colleagues had the control to obtain his own little house, to obtain the necessary affidavit, title probably required, issue of title also. So it's quite a bit of work, by Patrick, just to get the process to close.
And including that, our planning intern, Brad Zach, he has been an issue with this as well. I know for sure definitely on the water, water main issue, he was in, waiting in the water, but our service department trying to find the water main is definitely some firsthand experience in property acquisition, property maintenance, and hopefully a redevelopment.
Glad to build a better operator in terms of the full gathering experience. Mr. Rock? If we owned this property?
We owned it now.
Why do we care if this sort of whole business?
It's part of ours, or in the structure, you know. I think that has been a path for it. It's the size.
But if we owned it, we'd have to declare nuisance before we can knock it down.
That's the structure.
Doesn't contemplate if we owned the property? Doesn't make sense we should be able to just apply a permit?
When we're done here, you and I can go over with the stuff, because we can start.
The other portion of the minutes is that there may be some demo funding available through the county, which does require a public nuisance declaration. So it's, it's a tool, one just for us to follow our best practices, but also just to, or that funding to be available, that's a necessary piece.
Thank you. That makes sense. Any, any declaration, they could have someone else pay for that. Any thought to rehab, or you think?
Well, I think when we went into acquired, it was hopefully if we could redevelop it or do some exterior maintenance, but it was just in such poor shape inside, that we still felt it was important to acquire it just because it was such a likely, so that's a nice, it's a nice space, a parcel of land that wants its little green space. I think it's an attractive area for other businesses.
It clearly wasn't going in, if we didn't acquire it, it would still be leaking.
It could still be whole, I suppose.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the, you know, the thing about the city acquiring this property is that we're in a position of stabilizing good practices simply by removing, and, you know, what steps go from here, there's no specific plan, but, but even going as far as taking ownership and possession of this property, declaring it a nuisance and removing this particular structure is going to be approved in the secret area district.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anything further? Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Do you have a question?
All right. Please have a question. I'll make the motion, Mayor, to the structure located property in that town road, be a public residence.
Second by Mr. Wise. Is there any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, may I call?
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Wise.
Hi.
Mr. Sims.
Hi.
Mr. Earl.
Hi.
And motion carries. Public nuisance has been declared. Thank you, Mrs. Trucker. Thank you, Mr. Robin Myers. The next items on the agenda are D, E, and F, and for the known absence of I with respect to those items which we would consider on. And because of timing issues, they do need to be considered. I can say that Mrs. Weiss and Mrs. Perry, let me know if you have any advance that they're comfortable with being here. Mrs. Weiss teaches a class, which I'm currently on the stage, and unfortunately, our biggest meeting, they're not here with their class scheduled on the occasion. Mrs. Perry also is a personal family member, a way that was, that we knew of advance. It appears incumbent that because of the timing on this and in the absence of I to vote on this on emergency basis, we will need to call a special meeting tomorrow evening. Many of us, and I believe everybody up here on the dais, was planning on meeting at the finance committee meeting tomorrow at seven. I'm going to go ahead and just notify, declare in public notice now, if you follow up on the writing, then we will have a special meeting of the city council tomorrow evening at six thirty in the St. Room, half an hour before that finance committee meeting facility take our light, Mr. D. Do we have a motion table to the special item?
I, no, I think what we need to do is read the meeting.
Okay.
So we have a question.
Oh, there you go. Oh, yeah. And I would also, it blows the ten tomorrow. It would be six thirty. Finance meeting is at seven.
Is D and F passing? You have to be on the urgency?
Well, they do not, but it's just a motion.
But D cannot be passed.
And I don't know, can we pass the motions on, once they appropriate?
I would assume, if we pass the motion, we just literally can't, I assume, transaction will, very. I got, the deck closing on one, everyone talks tomorrow, is that on round one percent? It's Friday.
Yes, is that closing actually Friday, Mr. Robin?
Sillsby property is Friday.
Okay.
So. We have a new, the second reading of the product, but we need D as funding to pay for D that Friday.
My recommendation, Mr. Thomas, is that D tomorrow, give it to me, and then pack it first week, and just proceed with the, as you know.
All right. Very good. Followed up as nicely as we're doing. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item B. Oregon's twenty nineteen dash zero seven, Oregon's authorizing assumptions to the great appropriations for current expenditures of the city in the city behind Seattle for the period comes in January one, twenty nineteen, ending March thirty-one, twenty nineteen. And what that's matter is, this is a report that I've been having myself, I've introduced by Mayor Mike's friend, is to provide for expenditures, period of twenty eighteen purchase orders.
Yes. It's not for three over. That was the last one.
Yeah, right.
This is a hundred sixteen thousand dollars for.
Right, general capital improvement.
Yeah.
Number four, one, correct?
Yes.
So I just thought, that is, okay. All right. And we'll treat that, and us as our first reading. And we consider that as part of the screen. And finally, is a motion appropriating seventy-five thousand dollars for purchase of real estate located at two three zero seven Sacred Road. Is anybody who'd like to speak on this, or Sean?
Basically, we are looking to purchase a real estate at two three zero seven Sacred Road. It is a house on Sacred Road, which is adjacent to the city hall property. It is the house closest to being in the service yard. We've ever had the pleasure of being in our service yard, looked at generally where the giant pink pile goes when we collect all the units of the city. Picking up from behind that is a house, and that would be this house. And this house is available, and we are in the process of purchasing it. To do that, we appropriate the money. That is what this motion is. So is there a motion to appropriate seventy-five thousand for purchase of the estate located at two three seven Sacred Road?
Very good. Motion by Mr. Wise. Is there a second? Second by the secret rules. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, may I call?
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Wise.
Hi.
Mr. Sims.
Hi.
Mr. Earl.
Hi.
And motion carries. Next item, I'm going to have this motion appropriating eighty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of real estate located at three nine five Sillsby Road. This piece of property is the house on Sillsby Road that is located between the brick house, which the building and housing department are presently located, and the yellow house, which the city also owns, which is presently used for storage of the city property. So this would be the house in between, giving us three parcels, which are four. We are under contract purchasing that house as well, and simply incorporating funds to proceed and close. Is there a motion to appropriate eighty-five thousand for the purchase of the real estate located at three nine five Aces?
Some.
Motion by Mr. Wise. Second by Mr. Gruehl. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Rock? I just mentioned that this house is the, one of the floor remaining houses on that block to create a full block from North of Southern Road to Sacred Road and from Sillsby to the end of the property. So this is a quantity for us, future facilities, and this is the con. This was the last meeting, please.
That is correct. We will now, according to. Okay, there's, I know for the discussion, Mrs. Thomas, may I call?
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Wise.
Hi.
Mr. Sims.
Hi.
Mr. Earl.
Hi.
The motion passes. The item G is motion to hold the executive session following this regularly. For the purposes of discussing personnel, we will handle the real estate matters, and there are real estate matters to discuss in the executive session following this meeting. So I would like to entertain a motion now to go into executive session at the end of the meeting. No, motion by Mr. Rock. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wise. There is no discussion, Mrs. Thomas, may I call?
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Wise.
Hi.
Mr. Sims.
Hi.
Mr. Earl.
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. We will have an executive session at the end of the portion of the speaking. We'll now move on to directors' reports, finance. Don't really have much to report, other than continuing to work on the budget for our lefty frontline.
Excellent.
That's, these kind of candidates taking up a lot of other activities. That's one, and I'm looking forward to having him behind us tomorrow so that we can address the other things that are on the wayside. So are there any questions? Anybody else?
I would hopefully, so.
That's all I have for the morning. We will talk at the over length limit tomorrow, so it's going to be a, back. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Next director of law, Mr. McCord.
Very briefly, Council, we have a meeting set for next Thursday, late afternoon with the housing center to discuss their comments to our fair housing movements, possibly having some recommendations in that work, and back to the next meeting, you should anticipate having first meeting, I think, there's smoke, more of that stuff is discussed.
Thank you, Mr. McCord. Any questions for Mr. McCord? If there are any questions, Mr. McCord, that means it's on probably safety, we'll serve Chief Rogers.
Council, we have a few items, updates. We've been continuing efforts with flexible and updating and enhancing our policies, also efforts to complete annual report, hopefully next week or two. Frontline parking permission bar was implemented two weeks ago today, and, sorry, Monday, and feedback operation has been very positive so far, it's accomplishing. And last item involves a community engagement opportunity that we had this past Sunday at the public library, ended up a coffee with the cop event. Unfortunately, I had other obligations during that time, I was not able to attend, but feedback from the officers, again, were very positive, feedback was well attended. We took these out, we serve officer community to engage with the public, and very discussing our next coffee with the cop event. Thank you, Mr. McCord.
Thank you, Chief Rogers. Any questions to Chief Rogers? I do have a question. Have you received, with regard to frontline, have you received any feedback with respect for many residents who would seek to have overnight parking as a general rule?
A general rule that would prevent overnight parking?
Uh, no, no, the rule allows it. And I ask only because last week I had to receive petitions signed by thirty residents, so I acknowledge it's probably to change the law in order for somebody to allow overnight parking.
And I'm not aware.
Anything further for Chief Rogers? Seeing none, Chief Perko.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just want to report a couple things outside of our routine, which is responding to a week ago. On this night, we responded to assist Shaker Heights on a rather large structure fire off of Marshall Center during that cold snap with the, you know, the snow we had a week ago. They operated there for about over four, four or five hours, so Shaker Heights extends there thanks to our systems. Also want to report on our new record management program that we started in department early last year. One of the modules is a part of inventorying our fleet and equipment that'll allow us to start tracking downtime and handling costs of our vehicles better and be able to run more reports. So we've finally gotten around to pulling out that module and we're starting implementing it this time. Our department will also be continuing to report, we should have a better, Mr. Council.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. And are there any questions for Chief Perko? Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Next up is Service, Mr. McCord.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I only have two items to report on. One is the tree program, which is currently underway. We are approximately halfway complete with that project. Ashurst has been done, Edgerton, Diceart, and Charny. We're working on Fenwick next, and we held a meeting this evening, which didn't have very many attendees, but if anybody has any issues with the tree pruning project, they should call the service department. Second item is a household hazardous waste and paper shredding event is scheduled for March eighth and ninth. The eighth is Friday, the ninth is Saturday. The shredding truck will be available on site at the service department on March ninth from nine till nine. And I. The shredding truck will be available on site at the service department on March ninth, from nine till one, and nine until.
That's the, I report. Very good, thank you, Mr. Corning, any questions for Mr. Corning? Okay, excellent, thank you. Next up is building, building commission, Mr. Gruehl.
No reports this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gruehl. Senator, Mr. Chuni.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council, three quick items. Number one, Dominion, the gas project that was talking about it for the last couple weeks, they have started in Shaker Heights, they're on Fairmont Boulevard right now in the median. They will be moving into University Heights the week of, the first week of March, and that's in the Traymore area there in the Claretville, several streets in there. The mayor, service director, the police chief and I have a meeting with Dominion next Wednesday at nine o'clock to go over their project and get a little more information about their schedule and how they're going to proceed, and also how they're going to tidy up when they're done. Second item is the Cedar Road project, which is the county project that starts at Green Road, was all the way to I two seventy one. The pre-construction conference for that project is March fourteenth down in the valley, and they were beginning the contractor as per company, knows to proceed around April fifteenth. Doesn't really affect much of our town, it's, but if you drive Cedar Road, you're going to be affected, it'll be a long project. Finally, we received some good news this afternoon that the county has funded, they have a county road preventive maintenance reimbursement program, and we applied for crack sealing for both Marshall Center Road and Cedar Road. And this project, this program of theirs pays for the materials, so they're going to pay for all the materials for the crack sealing, we have to pay for the labor to install it. So the grant that they gave us, twenty nine thousand dollars, and it's about a one for one there, so we'll probably put in thirty ourselves in the crack sealing on Marshall Center and Cedar Road this year. Not the Cedar Road, the Sunday construction.
Henry. Very good, thank you, Mr. Chuni, any questions for Rock?
Going back to the gas line project, I always ask everybody this every time we, but on Fairmount, so it's just in the meeting, but in the residential streets, are the gas lines on both sides of the street or just on one side?
Most of them is on both sides of the street, underneath the sidewalk.
Where everybody wants.
They're going to be boring most of this job, and they can bore until they have to make a turn or whatever, three or four hundred feet at a time, then they have to come up with it.
Because I noticed on Fairmount, they're like every seventy.
Yes.
Okay, so.
But they also have to do those, dig it up to replace all the services, so for every, in our houses, they're every fifty feet, so they're going to have to dig all hundred fifty feet to reconnect all the houses.
And then the, go back to that program on Cedar, is that a resurfacing?
No, it's crack sealing, it's just crack sealing.
Crack sealing, oh.
Oh, you mean the big project?
From Green to two seventy one?
It's a resurfacing, it's from Green to two seventy one. And there'll be a handicap ramp updates, there'll be curb repairs and base repairs, but it's generally a resurfacing.
Very good, Mr. Chuni.
Yes, thank you. This question is somewhat related to gas companies, so I think I understand better, they're not really helping the road.
Correct. We're making a war under all roads, we're not letting them undercut any roads.
Okay, but in those areas, especially around the original, where our city meets Shaker, what kind of coordination would make sure we can get, or be sure that the streets are equipped, meaning, checkered parts are not in the same state of repair as the university parts? And so how do we, what do we usually do to, 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 to look at this?
Well, my office will have an inspector out there when they're there, and we don't inspect the gas line escalation, we're not experts in that, but.
Away from gas.
We'll inspect all the repairs and make sure that it's put back the way it was. They do a pre-construction video before and after. I also make them do a pre-construction video of the sewers that are under there, because when they're boring, I don't know, but they're hitting, they have to do that before and after, they do their installation. And our, our inspector will make sure that it's put back, sidewalks, if they do burn anything, the roads are really bad, all the restoration.
Right, as an example, where, where Meadowbrook meets, between the heights, wood coordinating, flow, surface. Whatever. My question is, are we looking at coordinating with Shaker around the metro, where the area was probably low?
First, well, we don't have any plan to that area this year, and Shaker isn't, you know, but absolutely, we won't do a project without, we'll have to coordinate that, that's true. As we've done in the past.
So I don't think our side is, you know, bad standing here, but I, you know, I just think that the condition of.
Right.
Very depressing, needs to be more, and it needs to be with less than a good impression. It looks like it's a depressing, right?
What happens is it's just a very short stretch, Shaker doesn't usually get to that stretch because.
It's so short.
It's so short, and they do it on the streets. And it looks bad on us, it looks like it's on the Percy Heights, and it's actually not, and we can't improve it because of our money. I know what you're talking about. We, we had that this year on Hadley, when we did Hadley, and we had Shaker pay for their hundred feet, is where it meets Fairmont. It's over by John Carroll, Hadley meets Fairmont, they actually paid their, we paid it together, but they paid for the car.
Yeah, not that you take the legal aid from saying that.
Very good, thank you. Anything further, Mr. Chuni, Mr. Gruehl?
Mr. Chuni, the project on Cedar from Green to two seventy one starts April?
Yes.
Any, any idea when it might end?
It's going to be all year, it'll be, it'll be in November. It's a long project, and by, by the way, it's a hundred percent paid for by the county, there's no city money, Linners, Beechwood, University Heights, or South Duke, we don't have any money. It's a hundred, it's unusual, it's something that Fitzgerald did when he was in office, he came out with this program where it's a hundred percent, well, they have eighty percent money from the feds, so they picked up the twenty percent of the city's share in that cost. That program didn't last very long. But this, this project, yeah, the county's paying a hundred percent.
Henry. Thank you. Next up is, is economic, I'm sorry, excuse me, communications and civic engagement, Mr. Corning.
Thank you very much, we keep it short into one topic. City magazine is out, it's been printed, I have brought copies with me, so feel free to grab one on your way out. It should be hitting mailboxes as possible as early as Friday, if not Saturday, and Monday, I'll make it available online probably a week after. Susan Drucker and I are going to visit every University Heights business that bought an ad, and do that tomorrow to thank them and drop off copies as well. So have copies available at various locations around town, so folks from outside University Heights can get a copy of it. The response so far has been very good, and I think it's also reflected in a number of ads that the Jewish News was able to sell for us. They sold forty one ads, which as I understand, actually, as they tell me, which is significantly more than our neighboring cities sell in their magazine. And ad sales are already looking good for the May issue, twenty six ads have already been purchased. There are several businesses that advertise in the first issue that would like to come back for the second issue, and so new advertisers as different camps will be advertising for this. So as you recall from the contract previously approved, we get thirty percent of all ad revenue, and so, and forty one ads, that's a little bit over ten thousand in ad revenue, so we'll get over three thousand of that, so where that doesn't pay for the magazine is a big subsidy, and that's more than our news report again, so, so far, so good. And there is, you may have seen on Facebook and YouTube, there is a live video out, revealing the cover, it's, the name of the magazine is Mosaic. We have about four hundred and fifty photographs of local residents, businesses, and other things making up new local Mosaic. So I think it looks pretty sharp, and yeah, so far, so good, and already planning articles for the issue two.
Fantastic, thank you, Mr. Coe, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Coe? All right, thank you. Thank you. Next would be economic developments, previously discussed with Mrs. Drucker, that her items are better safe for the executive session, so we'll skip economic development, go to community development, Mr. Earl Myers here.
Thank you, Mayor, just a few quick things, I come bearing good news, so we were notified earlier today that we have been awarded five thousand dollars for the community recycling awareness grant. And I previously brought this to council, so we will be sending out a postcard with a magnet to help encourage people to properly recycle, help keep that recycling stream clean, and the proper items that can and cannot go into the recycling stream. Perfect example are clam shells, that you commonly get berries, sometimes green beans and things like that, and those are not recyclable. So little things like that, just having the magnet, having the postcard to be able to post your refrigerator or somewhere around in your kitchen, near your trash, just to help people, you know, have the general reminder of what can and can't go into the trash. And then also, so we'll, next council meeting will have something accepting the grant funding, but we were also notified a couple weeks ago by NOPE that we will have, we will receive approximately forty two thousand dollars in funding for projects that will bring energy savings to the community and to the residents. So also on the next council agenda, we will have new ordinance accepting that thing as well. So good news, more money coming to the community.
Fantastic, thank you, Mr. Earl Myers, any questions for Mr. Earl?
Mr. Choni.
Before I go to the council debate reports, I would just have a motion to reconsider letter D of the agenda. Is there a motion to reconsider letter D?
I'll make the motion to reconsider letter D.
Very good, is there, is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rock, second by, as also Weissman, is there any discussions? None, Mrs. Thomas, we call roll.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Sims?
Hi.
Mr. Earl?
Hi.
Mr. Cameron?
Hi. Thus, I would ask if there is a motion to adopt on emergency ordinance twenty nineteen national seven, authorizing supplemental temporary appropriations for current number expenditures of the state, for the period coming in January one, twenty nineteen, ending in March thirty one, twenty nineteen, on emergency to rid the appropriation of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars in general capital. Who wants to, who wants?
You're some.
Excellent, is there a second? Second, and over. Yes, and over.
I'm going to say.
So, motion on emergency by Mr. Weissman, second by Mr. Rock, is there any discussion? See, we will vote first on suspension of rules, Mrs. Thomas, we will.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Weissman?
Hi.
Mr. Sims?
Hi.
Mr. Cameron?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
I've got a question. I can't answer that.
I, I hope, yes.
Mr. Sims?
Hi.
Mr. Earl?
Hi.
Very good, the motion carries, and thus I would also use this as an opportunity to rescind my, my previous declaration and notice of a emergency on the sixth third prior to the finance committee meeting. The finance committee, of course, will proceed to schedule at seven P.M. in this room. And we will now go to the reports for state committees, Bill and Mr. Weissman. Another report, some information, Mr. Cameron. Finance, that's Bernie, but nothing here this evening, but say we have a report for finance, we're going to do a finances update, and we know, we have a finance meeting tomorrow evening at seven P.M. One more, is there to say?
We had a meeting. We had a council of whole, it's a good weather. I know you're going to ask, we did need to talk about the budget further, and Mr. Goff brought us the adjustments, but still a working draft, and we made some recommendations, and what we want to see in the next.
That's right, very good. Anybody else have anything further to add regarding to finance committee? Saying not, we are on affairs, Mrs. Weiss is also not here to see, as I mentioned, she's teaching classes, so as I mentioned, we continue to give a report, noting Mr. Goff already mentioned scoping. Saying not, recreation, sorry, no reporting, okay, safety, Mr. Rock?
Yes, Mayor, I spoke with Chief Perko a couple meetings ago, like you mentioned, there might be some items for a future meeting, I want to get through the budget process, so let's try to get meetings set for March, and ask our clerk to call the numbers for March.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Gruehl. Service utilities, what you said?
Yes, committee made a open, February eleventh, and it basically did coordination with the collective and the community, some capital, some expenditure request. And the committee will be meeting against problems or serious problems, that's the fact, that it's sort of came to have a committee of all, which are like, the revenues and expenses.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Simmons. During the whole, Mrs. Perry, cannot hear Mr. Rock, they generally don't send, is anybody else that need to add for the meeting? This concludes the regular portion of this meeting, we do an executive session, and now we want to try something different this evening, rather than try to rush all people off. There is a conference room down the hall that we can't use, so that we can rush off, and you can pursue your leisure. And we can put the executive session down there and come back in here, and we are ready to reconvene.